Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8th, 2016. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee. December 8th, 2016. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee. December 8th, 2016. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee. December 8th, 2016. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8th, 2016 be approved. December 8th, 2016 be approved. December 8th, 2016 be approved. December 8th, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8th, 2016 stand approval. All those in favor say aye. of Thursday, December 8th, 2016 stand approval. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, of Thursday, December 8th, 2016 stand approval. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, of Thursday, December 8th, 2016 stand approval. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request And the next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today. leave of absence today. leave of absence today. leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence. for leave of absence. for leave of absence. for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope you truly of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope you truly of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope you truly of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope you truly enjoy yourself today. We think that it will also be an extremely knowledgeable day for enjoy yourself today. We think that it will also be an extremely knowledgeable day for enjoy yourself today. We think that it will also be an extremely knowledgeable day for enjoy yourself today. We think that it will also be an extremely knowledgeable day for you today, and we hope that you like it so much that you actually come back again. you today, and we hope that you like it so much that you actually come back again. So you today, and we hope that you like it so much that you actually come back again. So you today, and we hope that you like it so much that you actually come back again. So So again, thank you for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, again, thank you for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, again, thank you for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, again, thank you for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, who will present a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion who will present a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion who will present a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion who will present a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. With Darrell of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. With Darrell of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. With Darrell of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. With Darrell Stevens and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Stevens and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Stevens and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Stevens and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Councilman, I didn't know you can sing. Councilman, I didn't know you can sing. Councilman, I didn't know you can sing. Councilman, I didn't know you can sing.
I really can. I really can. I really can. I really can.
I'm impressed. I'm impressed. I'm impressed. I'm impressed.
That was my church voice. That was my Sunday voice. That was my church voice. That was my Sunday voice. That was my church voice. That was my Sunday voice. That was my church voice. That was my Sunday voice.
And joining Councilman Green, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman And joining Councilman Green, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman And joining Councilman Green, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman And joining Councilman Green, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Gumm, and Councilwoman Parker. Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Gumm, and Councilwoman Parker. Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Gumm, and Councilwoman Parker. Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Gumm, and Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning. Good morning. It's a pleasure to do this resolution to honor Good morning. Good morning. It's a pleasure to do this resolution to honor Good morning. Good morning. It's a pleasure to do this resolution to honor Good morning. Good morning. It's a pleasure to do this resolution to honor a great institution that has had a lot of leadership, and we train people for leadership a great institution that has had a lot of leadership, and we train people for leadership a great institution that has had a lot of leadership, and we train people for leadership a great institution that has had a lot of leadership, and we train people for leadership in a lot of different fields of human endeavor. At the municipal elected official level, in a lot of different fields of human endeavor. At the municipal elected official level, in a lot of different fields of human endeavor. At the municipal elected official level, we've in a lot of different fields of human endeavor. At the municipal elected official level, we've we've done training for leadership all across this nation, and I'm honored to follow in we've done training for leadership all across this nation, and I'm honored to follow in done training for leadership all across this nation, and I'm honored to follow in done training for leadership all across this nation, and I'm honored to follow in the footsteps of some of the great cap 'n' men like Mayor Tom Bradley from Los Angeles, the footsteps of some of the great cap 'n' men like Mayor Tom Bradley from Los Angeles, the footsteps of some of the great cap 'n' men like Mayor Tom Bradley from Los Angeles, the footsteps of some of the great cap 'n' men like Mayor Tom Bradley from Los Angeles, Mayor Wellington Webb from Denver, Mayor Michael Coleman from Columbus, Ohio, and Mayor Wellington Webb from Denver, Mayor Michael Coleman from Columbus, Ohio, and Mayor Wellington Webb from Denver, Mayor Michael Coleman from Columbus, Ohio, and Mayor Wellington Webb from Denver, Mayor Michael Coleman from Columbus, Ohio, and then then here locally, a number of prominent members of this fraternity have been in leadership then here locally, a number of prominent members of this fraternity have been in leadership then here locally, a number of prominent members of this fraternity have been in leadership here locally, a number of prominent members of this fraternity have been in leadership in the city from Mayor Wilson Good, Mayor John Street, former Councilman George Farrell, in the city from Mayor Wilson Good, Mayor John Street, former Councilman George Farrell, in the city from Mayor Wilson Good, Mayor John Street, former Councilman George Farrell, in the city from Mayor Wilson Good, Mayor John Street, former Councilman George Farrell, and I've been trained for leadership by these august men that are behind me, including and I've been trained for leadership by these august men that are behind me, including and I've been trained for leadership by these august men that are behind me, including and I've been trained for leadership by these august men that are behind me, including one very important one, who is my father, Walter Green. one very important one, who is my father, Walter Green. one very important one, who is my father, Walter Green. one very important one, who is my father, Walter Green. So with that, we are recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th So with that, we are recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th So with that, we are recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th So with that, we are recognizing the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas on January 5th, 1911, Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas on January 5th, 1911, Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas on January 5th, 1911, Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas on January 5th, 1911, on the campus of Indiana University at Bloomington, Indiana, Elder Watson Diggs, John Milton Lee, on the campus of Indiana University at Bloomington, Indiana, Elder Watson Diggs, John Milton Lee, on the campus of Indiana University at Bloomington, Indiana, Elder Watson Diggs, John Milton Lee, on the campus of Indiana University at Bloomington, Indiana, Elder Watson Diggs, John Milton Lee, Byron K. Armstrong, Guy Levis Grant, Ezra D. Alexander, Henry T. Asher, Marcus Peter Byron K. Armstrong, Guy Levis Grant, Ezra D. Alexander, Henry T. Asher, Marcus Peter Byron K. Armstrong, Guy Levis Grant, Ezra D. Alexander, Henry T. Asher, Marcus Peter Byron K. Armstrong, Guy Levis Grant, Ezra D. Alexander, Henry T. Asher, Marcus Peter Blakemore, Paul W. Kane, Edward G. Irvin, and George W. Edmonds founded Kappa Alpha Psi Blakemore, Paul W. Kane, Edward G. Irvin, and George W. Edmonds founded Kappa Alpha Psi Blakemore, Paul W. Kane, Edward G. Irvin, and George W. Edmonds founded Kappa Alpha Psi Blakemore, Paul W. Kane, Edward G. Irvin, and George W. Edmonds founded Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. And... Fraternity Incorporated. And... Fraternity Incorporated. And... Fraternity Incorporated. And...
Whereas, their vision, these ten astute men founded a college fraternity now comprised Whereas, their vision, these ten astute men founded a college fraternity now comprised Whereas, their vision, these ten astute men founded a college fraternity now comprised Whereas, their vision, these ten astute men founded a college fraternity now comprised of functioning undergraduate and alumni chapters on campuses in cities throughout this nation of functioning undergraduate and alumni chapters on campuses in cities throughout this nation of functioning undergraduate and alumni chapters on campuses in cities throughout this nation of functioning undergraduate and alumni chapters on campuses in cities throughout this nation and throughout the world. Through that seed, a fraternal tree was grown whose fruit of and throughout the world. Through that seed, a fraternal tree was grown whose fruit of and throughout the world. Through that seed, a fraternal tree was grown whose fruit of and throughout the world. Through that seed, a fraternal tree was grown whose fruit of membership is available to and now enjoyed by over 150,000 college men regardless of membership is available to and now enjoyed by over 150,000 college men regardless of membership is available to and now enjoyed by over 150,000 college men regardless of membership is available to and now enjoyed by over 150,000 college men regardless of race, religion, or national origin. race, religion, or national origin. race, religion, or national origin. race, religion, or national origin.
Whereas from its origin through today, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is a unique Whereas from its origin through today, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is a unique Whereas from its origin through today, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is a unique Whereas from its origin through today, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is a unique organization organization in that its members share a common purpose of achievement in every field organization in that its members share a common purpose of achievement in every field organization in that its members share a common purpose of achievement in every field in that its members share a common purpose of achievement in every field of human endeavor. of human endeavor. And this unified purpose is exemplified every day by its members in of human endeavor. And this unified purpose is exemplified every day by its members in of human endeavor. And this unified purpose is exemplified every day by its members in And this unified purpose is exemplified every day by its members in Congress, city halls, Congress, city halls, city councils, courtrooms, boardrooms, newsrooms, classrooms, concert Congress, city halls, city councils, courtrooms, boardrooms, newsrooms, classrooms, concert Congress, city halls, city councils, courtrooms, boardrooms, newsrooms, classrooms, concert city councils, courtrooms, boardrooms, newsrooms, classrooms, concert halls, film and recording halls, film and recording studios, physician offices, athletic fields, fields of combat, halls, film and recording studios, physician offices, athletic fields, fields of combat, halls, film and recording studios, physician offices, athletic fields, fields of combat, studios, physician offices, athletic fields, fields of combat, pulpits, and more. And... pulpits, and more. And... pulpits, and more. And... pulpits, and more. And...
Whereas in addition to the achievement of its members, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Whereas in addition to the achievement of its members, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Whereas in addition to the achievement of its members, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Whereas in addition to the achievement of its members, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is dedicated to training for leadership, and through its various programs, including is dedicated to training for leadership, and through its various programs, including is dedicated to training for leadership, and through its various programs, including is dedicated to training for leadership, and through its various programs, including the A-MAN Initiative, Achievement Academy, Guide Right, Kappa Camp, and Kappa League the A-MAN Initiative, Achievement Academy, Guide Right, Kappa Camp, and Kappa League the A-MAN Initiative, Achievement Academy, Guide Right, Kappa Camp, and Kappa League the A-MAN Initiative, Achievement Academy, Guide Right, Kappa Camp, and Kappa League has mentored several young men into the past, current, and future leaders of our country. has mentored several young men into the past, current, and future leaders of our country. has mentored several young men into the past, current, and future leaders of our country. has mentored several young men into the past, current, and future leaders of our country. And... 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 And...
Whereas members of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity have a lifelong commitment to serve in Whereas members of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity have a lifelong commitment to serve in Whereas members of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity have a lifelong commitment to serve in Whereas members of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity have a lifelong commitment to serve in the common person, and through their commitment have provided substantial support to St. the common person, and through their commitment have provided substantial support to St. the common person, and through their commitment have provided substantial support to St. the common person, and through their commitment have provided substantial support to St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, the United Negro College Fund, Habitat for Humanity, Jude Children's Research Hospital, the United Negro College Fund, Habitat for Humanity, Jude Children's Research Hospital, the United Negro College Fund, Habitat for Humanity, Jude Children's Research Hospital, the United Negro College Fund, Habitat for Humanity, and several other nationwide and grassroots community service initiatives across the and several other nationwide and grassroots community service initiatives across the and several other nationwide and grassroots community service initiatives across the and several other nationwide and grassroots community service initiatives across the country and around the world. country and around the world. country and around the world. country and around the world.
And whereas Kappa Alpha Phi Psi Fraternity and the city of Philadelphia share a special And whereas Kappa Alpha Phi Psi Fraternity and the city of Philadelphia share a special And whereas Kappa Alpha Phi Psi Fraternity and the city of Philadelphia share a special And whereas Kappa Alpha Phi Psi Fraternity and the city of Philadelphia share a special bond in that the fraternity's international headquarters is located in Philadelphia, and bond in that the fraternity's international headquarters is located in Philadelphia, and bond in that the fraternity's international headquarters is located in Philadelphia, and bond in that the fraternity's international headquarters is located in Philadelphia, and historically, the greater Philadelphia region has become home to hundreds of members in historically, the greater Philadelphia region has become home to hundreds of members in historically, the greater Philadelphia region has become home to hundreds of members in historically, the greater Philadelphia region has become home to hundreds of members in both undergraduate and alumni chapters, future mother of hopefully a Kappa Alpha member. both undergraduate and alumni chapters, future mother of hopefully a Kappa Alpha member. both undergraduate and alumni chapters, future mother of hopefully a Kappa Alpha member. both undergraduate and alumni chapters, future mother of hopefully a Kappa Alpha member. As my son would say, "It is the organization with the most depth, Mom." As my son would say, "It is the organization with the most depth, Mom." As my son would say, "It is the organization with the most depth, Mom." As my son would say, "It is the organization with the most depth, Mom."
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter on the occasion of the 106th Annual Founder's Day of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Darrell Stevens, Pole Mark of the Philadelphia Alumni this resolution be presented to Darrell Stevens, Pole Mark of the Philadelphia Alumni this resolution be presented to Darrell Stevens, Pole Mark of the Philadelphia Alumni this resolution be presented to Darrell Stevens, Pole Mark of the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated as an evidence of the sincere admiration Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated as an evidence of the sincere admiration Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated as an evidence of the sincere admiration Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated as an evidence of the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body. This resolution is supported and signed by all and respect of this legislative body. This resolution is supported and signed by all and respect of this legislative body. This resolution is supported and signed by all and respect of this legislative body. This resolution is supported and signed by all members of council, and it's a pleasure to present this resolution this morning. members of council, and it's a pleasure to present this resolution this morning. members of council, and it's a pleasure to present this resolution this morning. members of council, and it's a pleasure to present this resolution this morning.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Stevens for remarks. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Stevens for remarks. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Stevens for remarks. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Stevens for remarks.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Morning. Morning. Morning. Morning.
I'd like to thank Councilman Green, Brother Councilman Green, and all the council I'd like to thank Councilman Green, Brother Councilman Green, and all the council I'd like to thank Councilman Green, Brother Councilman Green, and all the council I'd like to thank Councilman Green, Brother Councilman Green, and all the council people who supported this resolution. It's an iron of privilege to be a representative people who supported this resolution. It's an iron of privilege to be a representative people who supported this resolution. It's an iron of privilege to be a representative people who supported this resolution. It's an iron of privilege to be a representative of Kappa Alpha Psi and the Pole Mark of these fine men. As Brother Green said, our motto's of Kappa Alpha Psi and the Pole Mark of these fine men. As Brother Green said, our motto's of Kappa Alpha Psi and the Pole Mark of these fine men. As Brother Green said, our motto's of Kappa Alpha Psi and the Pole Mark of these fine men. As Brother Green said, our motto's "Achievement in every field of human endeavor," and that's what we strive to do. So again, "Achievement in every field of human endeavor," and that's what we strive to do. So again, "Achievement in every field of human endeavor," and that's what we strive to do. So again, "Achievement in every field of human endeavor," and that's what we strive to do. So again, I want to thank the entire council for your support, and Kappa Alpha Psi will be here I want to thank the entire council for your support, and Kappa Alpha Psi will be here I want to thank the entire council for your support, and Kappa Alpha Psi will be here I want to thank the entire council for your support, and Kappa Alpha Psi will be here to help in any endeavors that serve the purposes of mankind. Thank you very much. to help in any endeavors that serve the purposes of mankind. Thank you very much. to help in any endeavors that serve the purposes of mankind. Thank you very much. to help in any endeavors that serve the purposes of mankind. Thank you very much.
Council, be at ease. Council, be at ease. Council, be at ease. Council, be at ease. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, who will present a resolution recognizing Sharice R. Lilly. With Ms. Lilly and those accompanying her, please come to the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, and Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez. And Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, when I, like the rest of Philadelphia, read the article that first appeared in the Philadelphia Tribune noting that Sharice Lilly was set to retire, I'm sure that I, like many others, sort of took a stroll through my own mental history to try to remember when I first learned that a Sharice Lilly was in existence. And I was a teenager running in between Room 577 in your office, Councilman Johnson, Room 580, between Councilwoman Tasco and Councilwoman Augusta Clark's office, and this lady, whenever anything substantive was happening in government, in the world of nonprofit, community-based organizations, corporate, was Sharice Lilly. When I thought about her, I couldn't think of another Philadelphian who had been bred in a strong foundation based in education and public service that she learned from her parents who was educated. I think she made an awesome choice in choosing her husband. Now, he's wearing two hats because you did just see him standing. Where are you? Where are you? He's right here. You just saw him standing with the Kappa men, but I'll tell you, in 1989, Sharice Lilly became a member, a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, so they wear those colors. And he also happens to be a Lincoln man, class of 1968. But what was so different about Sharice is that from the community, government, the legal community, corporate, research, no matter who the bigwigs were that she was interacting with, issues surrounding diversity and inclusion in the world of academia, in law, in government, her message never changed. Now, for some people, that may not be a big deal, but it is easy for someone attempting to move forward in their careers and think that they have to tone down the message regarding what they believe in, and when you get inside of different rooms with different audiences, your message changes. Sharice has been consistent. She knows how to deliver a message, but the message hasn't changed. For that Sharice Lilly, we are grateful, and I'm honored to join with my colleagues in saluting your career and contributions to the city of Philadelphia. The resolution reads as follows: "It's a resolution recognizing and honoring Sharice R. Lilly upon her retirement from Comcast Corporation and for over forty years of dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia. And whereas Sharice R. Lilly, a timeless public servant and corporate citizen, recently retired from Comcast Corporation after twelve years of dedicated service and..."
Whereas the Houston, Texas native received her BA, Bachelor of Arts in '73 from Wesleyan University, cum laude, her Juris Doctor JD in 1976 from Temple Law School, Dean's Honor List, and her LLM, a Master's in Law in 1982 from Yale Law School. And...
Whereas Sharice worked as a research assistant to the Honorable A. Leon Higginbotham Jr. from 1975 to 1976 on his first book, In the Matter of Color. From 1976 to 1978, Ms. Lilly was a law clerk to the Honorable Clifford Scott Green, U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. And... Whereas Sharice has extensive legal experience ranging from trial attorney in the U.S. Department of Justice's Civil Rights Division, Deputy Director of Community Legal Services, Inc., Professor at Villanova Law School, Assistant United States Attorney for the East District of Pennsylvania, General Counsel to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Philadelphia, and City Solicitor to the City of Philadelphia. And... Sharice's practice included the following: the representation of employers and management in a wide variety of labor and employment issues, including discrimination, harassment, and other civil rights litigation, act-will litigation, restrictive covenant, trade, secret claims, ERISA litigation, and litigation before the National Labor Relations Board and state agencies. Further, she defended banks, hospitals, universities, major corporations, the city of Philadelphia, and the federal government, and federal and state court, and before administrative agencies, and she has served as an advisor to clients, including arts and cultural organizations like Philadanco, on diversity and anti-discrimination issues. She frequently lectures regarding diversity, civil rights, employment discrimination, and affirmative action issues as well. And...
Whereas prior to joining Comcast, Sharice was a partner in the law firm of Ballard, Spar, Andrews, and Ingersoll, LLP, from January 1992 to February 2005. At Ballard Spar, she was Chair of the Litigation Department from 2002 to 2005, and was a member of the Employment and Labor Law Group of the firm. And...
And I also want to thank Sharice for coming down to Point Breeze, South Philadelphia, when I served in the State House to participate in a leadership workshop around domestic violence for young girls. And I was so inspired by her participation because, again, she works for one of the biggest and largest corporations, not only here in the city of Philadelphia, but also in the United States. But she thought it not robbery to come down and inspire a group of young girls to go on and follow their goals, dreams, and aspirations, so I want to personally say thank you for your service. Whereas Sharice joined Comcast in 2005 as Vice President of Human Resources for Comcast Corporation and Senior Vice President of Human Resources for Comcast Cable. She served as President of the Comcast Foundation from 2011 through 2016, and she most recently served as a fellow and Vice President of Community Investment for Comcast Corporation and as an Executive Vice President of the Comcast Foundation. And...
Whereas Sharice has been a member of many civic commissions, including the Independent Charter Commission, the Philadelphia Criminal Justice Task Force, the MOVE Commission, and the Philadelphia Election Reform Task Force. She is the former president of the Philadelphia Chapter of the Federal Bar Association, and she has served on the Board of the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, PICA, from 1993 to 1998. She also served as Chair of the Board of Governors of the Philadelphia Bar Association in 1995. She has served as Chair of the American Bar Association Commission on Racial and Ethnic Diversity in the Profession from 1999 to 2002, and was a member of the ABA Standing Committee on Federal Judiciary. She is co-chair of the Racial Bias and Justice System Committee in the Philadelphia Bar Association. She has also served on the Supreme Court of the Pennsylvania Committee on Racial and Gender Bias. She has also received numerous honors from organizations such as the Pennsylvania Bar Association, the Philadelphia Business Journal, the Black Women in Sport Foundation, and the Girl Scouts of Southeastern Pennsylvania, one of our icons.
Whereas while Sharice retired from Comcast, she is by no means retiring from her civic engagement in Philadelphia. She will continue to lecture at local universities on diversity, community investment, and corporate social responsibility.
and corporate social responsibility. She will also maintain her appointments on the Board of Penmutual Life Insurance Company, the Pico Energy Company, an excellent company, the United Way, and the Franklin Institute, as well as serving on the PNC Regional Advisory Board. Now therefore, be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes and honors Sharice Lilly upon her retirement from Comcast and for over forty years of dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia. And be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Sharice R. Lilly as evidence in the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. And I might add, and I joshed her earlier, have you ever seen her neatly coiffed fro out of place one time throughout these forty years? We don't know how you've done it, but you've done it with grace, dignity, charm. And we respect and thank you, Sharice Lilly. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Lilly for remarks.
I am so honored and I am so grateful to this City Council. As you all know, a big part of my career was in city government, both as General Counsel to the Redevelopment Authority and as City Solicitor of the great city of Philadelphia. My work is not done, and I will continue to be a very active member of the Philadelphia community, both in my for-profit boards and in my nonprofit boards. And I'm sure that there are some City Council people up here who are going to get me involved in politics. So I thank you for this honor. I'm very grateful. And thank you to all of my friends, who are very busy people, and my wonderful husband, for taking times out of their busy day to be with me. Thank you all so much.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the latitude. Mr. President, I'm also honored to have here today in our council, a fifth grader, a proud fifth grader from the Friere Charter School, who is Morgan Stewart, along with her mother, Nafika Muakil. And Morgan is here because she has an interest in one day running for public office. So she's going to visit the fourth floor, the third floor, the fifth floor. But she says she's also going down to the second floor, too. I don't know what that means, but she's going to visit. So Morgan Stewart and her mother, Nafika, thank you so very much for being here.
Welcome.
And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Welcome. And we look forward to visiting your office one day, young lady. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Council President. I also, too, want to welcome members of our Muslim community and their allies who are here today. I want them, I want to thank them for coming, who truly represent and encompass the diversity of our city and our nation at a very important time. So thank you all for coming out and for speaking up earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and welcome. Thank you for being here. The next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, and today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Plan Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160615, 161003, 161004, 161016, 161017, 161056, 161057, 161060, 160839, 161104, 161107, and 161112. And I am pleased to advise that on December fourteen, December twenty, two thousand and sixteen, and January twenty-four, two thousand and seventeen, I signed all the bills that were passed by council on December one, two thousand and sixteen. And that on December nine, December nineteen, December twenty, two thousand and sixteen, January twenty-three, and January twenty-four, two thousand and seventeen, I signed all the bills that were passed by council on December eight, two thousand and sixteen. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution approving the two thousand and seventeen Strategic Plan Performance Report Acquisition Policies and Disposition Policies of the Philadelphia Land Bank. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 2323 East York Street. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, conveying title to certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Seventh Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 123 by striking from the City Plan Euclid Street from Fifteenth Street to Sixteenth Street. And an ordinance revising the lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating portions of the house lines and curb lines of Convention Avenue from Twenty-Fourth Street to Health Sciences Drive, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of the twenty-fifth Annual African-American Children's Book Fair. And that February fourth is the kickoff of the National Literacy Initiative, Preserve a Legacy by a Book.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar. Thank you. Want to do that now? Okay, before we proceed with the introduction, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to interrupt at this time. I just wanted to, for a brief moment, recognize a delegation of mayors who are visiting us from Columbia. They are being escorted here by the Chief of Staff of Commerce Department, Sylvie Geyer. I want to, there's eighteen mayors representing different jurisdictions from Columbia.
Welcome. Thank you for coming. And go back and tell folks how well behaved we are. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce three bills and five resolutions. Three of the resolutions have been signed by many members of council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Farragut Street and Locust Street, Mount Vernon Street and Twelfth Street, Chancellor Street and Fifty-first Street, Fifty-first Street and Hazel Avenue, Thirty-sixth Street and Havreford Avenue, Wailusing Avenue and Thirty-eighth Street, and Sansom Street and Forty-second Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating the easterly house line of University Avenue from a point approximately five hundred forty-five feet north of Currie Boulevard to a point approximately two hundred thirty-six feet further northwardly therefrom.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Baltimore Avenue and Forty-second Street, Trinity Street and Forty-eighth Street, Forty-sixth Street and Chester Avenue, and Pallerton Avenue and Forty-first Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing February two thousand and seventeen as Career and Technical Education Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Dr. Arthur C. Evans for his accomplishments and numerous contributions to the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the joint City Council Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine the benefits of having a more robust homeless prevention program in Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled in certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the Sixth Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration, deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled in certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the Twenty-fourth Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will also be in next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two bills and eight resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the provision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 123 by striking from the City Plan Euclid Avenue from Fifteenth Street to Sixteenth Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Broad Street, Girard Avenue, Ridge Avenue, and Cecil Moore Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Sandy Scheller and the Scheller Family Foundation for their tireless work throughout the city of Philadelphia.
And this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Honigman Foundation on their work to improve the lives of citizens across the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
Next week.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District.
And that will be in next week's calendar also. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Hinn.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold hearings to examine the potential impact of the presidential election and the impending state budget process on the city of Philadelphia's financial condition.
This week's calendar. And Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Welcome back, Mr. President.
Thank you.
.....................
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter fourteen-five-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section fourteen-five-oh-four entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District by further regulating the placement of parking garages in the Ridge Park-Roxborough NCO. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Shores Lane, Walnut Lane, Henry Avenue, Lincoln Drive, Ridge Avenue, and Main Street. And an ordinance amending Chapter fourteen-five-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending the subsection entitled NCA Ridge Avenue Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay and making related changes. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Silverwood Street, Gay Street, Baker Street, and Carson Street. And to adopt a master plan for the former Saint Mary of the Assumption Catholic Church and adjacent parcels. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Henry Avenue and Ainsley Street, Fifty-second Street to Woodbine Avenue, Midvale Avenue to East Fall Station, Midvale Avenue to Stokely Street.
Thank you. Those five bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate departments.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Hashimu Jaromoke, Yuki Washington, Rick Williams, Duchess Rogers, and Lady Bee, who are leaders in the area of radio, print, and television journalism in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring women leaders in Philadelphia's media industry, Mary Mason, Patty Jackson, Thera Milling, and Marty Moss-Cone in observance of Women's History Month.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging state legislators to comply with the requirements of the Federal Real ID Act, allowing Pennsylvania residents to continue to use state-issued driver's licenses for domestic air travel and access to federal facilities.
And that will be in next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Two privileged resolutions, two non-privileged resolutions, and three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Fifteenth Street between Carpenter Street and Washington Avenue and establishing no parking regulations on both sides of Fifteenth Street from Carpenter Street to Washington Avenue. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Carpenter Street, Broad Street, and Washington Avenue. And an ordinance amending Section twenty-six-oh-six of the Philadelphia Code entitled Board of Ethics by adding... by adding a requirement that the Board of Ethics conduct mandatory ethics training for council members during each council term.
And those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution authorizing council committees on legislative oversight and public safety to hold hearings examining solutions to trees and other obstructions in the city's alleyways.
And this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing council committees on legislative oversight and public health and human services to hold hearings examining the incidence of raccoon infestation in the city of Philadelphia and administrative solutions for the public health concerns posed thereby.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying title to certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District.
And next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Senate to reject U.S. Senator Jeff Sessions' nomination for the Office of U.S. Attorney General.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill, two non-privileged, and two privileged resolutions on my behalf, one resolution on behalf of the administration, and one resolution on behalf of you, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell and myself.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 9, 205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on the east side of the 5800 through 6500 block of Castor Avenue between Oxford Avenue to McGee Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Battalion Chief Joquin Enrique Colon Jr. on the occasion of his retirement following thirty-four years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating the outstanding career of Belinda Ann Mayo for her devotion and dedication to providing access to low-income housing throughout the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Council of the City of Philadelphia to investigate the recent sale of tax-delinquent properties approved for acquisition by the Philadelphia Land Bank for workforce housing, side yards, and community gardens, to assess land bank strategies to better support balanced and equitable neighborhood growth, and to explore a moratorium on all lien and share sales of tax-delinquent properties.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. These conveying conditional fees, simple title, and certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 31st Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the 2017 Strategic Plan Performance Report Acquisition Policies and Disposition Policies of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution, co-sponsored by council members Dom, Jim, Bass, Johnson, Parker, and Jones.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing the efforts of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Coalition and declaring February 2017 as a month of peace in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 19, 1703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refunds Regarding Credits and Due Dates.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to Include Transfers Between Stepparents and Stepchildren as a Transaction Excluded From the Realty Transfer Tax.
Refer to committee. And Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Jonesy Mazudi for her exceptional leadership and dedication over the last sixteen years as Executive Director of Philadelphia Futures.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a resolution recognizing January 27, 2017 as Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia.
And one more time. Thank you, Councilman. This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling for the adoption and implementation of 2016 Assessment of Fair Housing Report recently submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to meet the goals of the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution and a request to make very, very brief remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution declaring January 30 of 2017 Fred Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties and the Constitution in Philadelphia.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues, council members, Green, Squilla, O., Parker, and Dom for co-sponsoring this resolution. And it's a great honor for me to ask our city council to consider this resolution to name, to honor Fred Korematsu here in this city. He was a Japanese-American who, in 1942, was arrested when the orders for internment came down, was arrested because he had refused to abide by them. He refused to report for internment. He stood up against discrimination against Americans of Japanese ancestry. He was incarcerated and interned at Topaz Concentration Camp in Utah. But what Fred Korematsu did was something that was extraordinary in the history of American law, which was that he challenged this internment and took his case all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court in 1944. When the Supreme Court upheld his conviction by a six-to-three vote, arguing that it was a military necessity, Fred Korematsu joined the 100,000 other Japanese-Americans who suffered for the number of years that they were incarcerated, losing their homes, personal properties, who died in many of these internment camps. But as soon as he was released, continued his struggle. He continued to challenge his convictions and pursued them until they were finally overturned in 1983, in which a court found, a federal court, found that a grave injustice was done to Fred Korematsu and the other Japanese-Americans, and regretted deeply what had happened. Fred Korematsu continued to speak out, filing front-of-the-court briefs at the age of eighty-five, again on behalf of Muslim inmates held in Guantanamo Bay, and filed a similar brief on behalf of an American Muslim man being held in solitary confinement. Today, we honor his memory, or ask that the city council honors his memory, especially as we coincide it with the passage of a resolution that honors our Muslim communities. And it's a reminder that the profound injustice that was done to Fred Korematsu and 100,000 Americans of Japanese ancestry is a reminder to us about the evils of legislation based on xenophobia and racism, particularly in light of the current proposals to limit or ban immigrants and refugees in the United States based on their faith. And so with that, I respectfully ask for the council's support and thank you when it comes up.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be, thank you. That'll be on today's final passes calendar. Councilwoman.
Apologies. I request a leave for the remainder of the council session, and will be voting aye on all resolutions and bills that come forward today.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted, and the record will reflect your voting aye on all bills and resolutions today. And Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I offer one privileged resolution, co-sponsored by Councilman O'Neill, O., Sanchez, and Blackwell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings concerning the Board of Health's Regulations relating to the tobacco retailing license and the impact these regulations could have on local businesses.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills, one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Clearfield Street, Kensington Avenue, Frankfurt Creek, and Aramigo Avenue. And an ordinance amending Section 14, 507 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CDO, Central Delaware Riverfront Overlay District by amending provisions under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing Adam S. Harmon to construct and maintain various planter encroachments at 339 North Broad Street.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 2323 East York Street.
And that will be on next week's final passes. And we now go to Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance arising parking restrictions on Baphomet Pike East Side between Chestnut Hill Avenue and Newton Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wayne Avenue, Berkeley Street, Moore Street, West Logan Street Extended.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings on the impact and the repeal of the Affordable Care Act on the residents of the city of Philadelphia, and particularly on low-income and elderly populations, and further investigating the city of Philadelphia's preparedness to address the increase of those who would be without adequate healthcare insurance.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the Eighth District Sanitation Initiative on its efforts to find a solution to chronic and long-term, the chronic and long-term problem of trash dumping in the city of Philadelphia.
And this week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer one non-privileged resolution, two privileged resolutions, and one bill. And may I be heard on the bill once it is read, Council President?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19, 2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receives Taxes by providing for a tax credit for large employers who employ low-skill employees, as well as providing exemptions from certain charges and taxes imposed by Chapter 19, 1600 entitled Water and Sewer Rents and Chapter 19, 2700 entitled Sales and Use Tax and Hotel Occupancy Tax.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. We are all, all of us engaged in trying to answer the question of how do we create more jobs for persons who may have at most a college degree or not? And how do we create jobs in Philadelphia, good family-sustaining jobs for people who do not have a high level of skill? So in looking at this issue as we have over these many years, I do want to offer a possible way of providing more opportunities specifically for these Philadelphians. And for me, I think it ties in heavily with the global economy, that we do need large employers, large employers of a thousand or more people that hire 500 or more low-skill workers, as defined by the U.S. Department of Labor. That provide at least $45,000 in salary plus additional benefits such as health and other benefits. And I think that while Philadelphia is a growing city with a lot of opportunities for college graduates and those with high skills and high degrees, people in our neighborhoods do not have the same opportunities. And honestly, I don't think they're going to be provided by small businesses. The problem is that folks in the neighborhoods don't have enough money in their pockets to support these small businesses. Large employers are critically important. When we lose one large employer, it is sending a message over time that we are losing more. When we gain a large employer, it is sending a message that we can gain more. So on this basis, I'm proposing that we create a tax credit and exemption for large employers who invest in Philadelphia, the facilities, that will hire at least 1,000 new employers, employees, of which 500 are low-skilled, that they be given a $5,000 tax credit against Philadelphia business taxes per year for five years, and that they be exempt from stormwater management fees for that period of time, as well as the city portion of the use and occupancy tax. There are new opportunities. They are not readily available to us, but I think we can compete for them, and I think this would be a tool along the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, and that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia's Community Behavioral Health Organization on the occasion of its twentieth anniversary.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the 2016 winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing fifteen individuals to the task force on the Philadelphia music industry.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. Thank you very much. There are no reports from committee. And before considering the resolutions and bills on final passes today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution, if you haven't already signed up, I'd ask that you please do so. When your name is called, you will go to the First Day Back Oversight. What I would like to do is consider the calendar on the first reading. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on our first reading calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar. Again, thank you, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage on today's calendar. Bills number 16119, 160687-A, 161001, 161016. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. We will now go to our public comment session. Our public comment session, as I said earlier, will go as follows. If you're interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passes calendar today, if you haven't already done so, we ask that you sign up. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When that light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines established and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the witness list?
Colleen McClay.
Commenting on Councilwoman Bass's resolution on affordable healthcare.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilman Bass and city council members this morning, thank you very much for your vocal support to protect high-quality healthcare and affordable insurance through the Affordable Care Act, Medicaid, and the Children's Health Insurance Program. I'm Colleen McCauley. I'm the Health Policy Director at Public Citizens for Children and Youth, a child advocacy and policy organization working on behalf of kids in Philly and Southeast PA. In over 20 years, PCCY has operated a telephone helpline assisting thousands of kids, thousands of parents apply for insurance for their kids for Medicaid and CHIP. One of those parents recently is a self-employed, single father of two daughters. His youngest child has asthma and a heart murmur, so she has pre-existing conditions, but that's not a problem because CHIP and Medicaid cover kids who have pre-existing conditions. So, we helped him to get her daughter the inhaler she needs and the monitoring she needs for her murmur so that she can be in school and be active and get the care she needs to prevent complications for her cardiac condition. CHIP and Medicaid work, and more than 75%, 75% of children in Philadelphia are enrolled in Medicaid and CHIP, an astounding three in four rely on these programs to keep them healthy and to provide them care when they are sick. In fact, one in three kids in Pennsylvania is covered by CHIP or Medicaid. They are fabulous examples of good public policy for children. They offer comprehensive, child-focused benefits, and they're cost-effective. Did you know that CHIP costs 50% less, it costs 50% less to insure a child through CHIP than the average uncompensated care cost for children currently being covered by hospitals in the state? $2,500 to cover a kid in CHIP, almost $5,000 to cover a kid for uncompensated care. We recently released a report on Philadelphia child well-being, and it was only in the health sector where improvement for kids occurred since the depths of the reception, recession back in 2008. In addition to health, we looked at how kids fared in K-12 public education, early childhood, and in terms of economic well-being, but it was only in the health sector where kids saw improvement over time. Well, why is that? Because good public policies such as Medicaid and CHIP matter and have been demonstrated to change the life outcomes of children. And when some kids don't have health insurance, all kids are impacted. Programs like Medicaid work for kids and for their parents and for other adults. And as the old adage goes, if it's "Don't fix what's not broken," children and adults alike should have access to affordable, high-quality healthcare coverage. We can't go backwards at this time. Any plan to modify CHIP, Medicaid, and the Affordable Care Act must preserve coverage gains for all Philadelphians and the 1 million-plus Pennsylvanians who have them. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your testimony.
Antaeet Kraus.
Commenting on Councilwoman Bass's affordable healthcare resolution.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Antaeet Kraus. I'm the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Health Access Network and a proud resident of Philadelphia, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Bass for introducing this resolution. In Philadelphia, there's 220,000 individuals that rely on health coverage through the marketplace and Medicaid. In Pennsylvania, there's 5 million individuals who are now free from discrimination because they have a pre-existing condition. That's almost half of the population of Pennsylvania has a pre-existing condition. We need to stand up and make sure that we fight for working families here in Philadelphia by saying no to repeal of the Affordable Care Act, no to cuts to Medicaid and Medicare. I'm proud to be joined here today by other coalition partners. We're here with Access Matters, Community Legal Services, Project Home, First Hospital Foundation, and I'm also joined by folks that are benefiting from the ACA. So, we have a small business owner who has no idea what she will do for healthcare coverage if her coverage is pulled from her. We have folks here on Medicaid expansion who are relying on care right now to be able to see their doctor. We have a primary care physician who's on the front lines every day treating patients in Philadelphia. So, we applaud City Council Councilwoman Bass for putting forth this resolution to hold public hearings about what the impact will be to not only the residents of Philadelphia, but our city budget, our state budget, and our federal budget. We cannot go backwards. So, we are here today to say no repeal of the ACA, no cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, CHIP. Our families' lives are on the line, and our budget is on the line, and there's thousands of Philadelphians right now in the streets sending the same message. Thank you.
Thank you. If the Imam is here, please come up.
Commenting on 160687A.
See Imam?
Yeah, we're here on the bill on Islamophobia. Is that the test of bill?
It's a, you don't want to, that's not, that's not the bill that you wanted to testify on?
No, we're here for the Islamophobia bill.
Okay, hold on a second.
Yeah, we're here on the bill on behalf of the Muslim community and the Islamophobia bill. And so, uh...
Can't hear you. You need to speak into the mic.
Okay, yeah, so we come down to talk about the Islamophobia piece that the Muslims have been experiencing in this city for a long time. We have over 600,000 Muslims in this city. A lot of people like to say the numbers is 400,000, 200,000. We know the numbers is 600,000. There's a lot of them that's in the closet. There's some of them that's even in this room that's on council. Yeah, so the thing is, though, the Islamophobia that we are experiencing in this city is subtle. We know some of our brothers and sisters, they experience it a little different. And really, I like to say to Councilwoman Parker, who really has been instrumental in coming out to the mosques, talking to the Muslims, the things that you have been doing in the Ninth Councilmatic District, we really appreciate that. But we haven't been experiencing that all the way across the board, and the Muslims have to be very careful because there's a whole subtle line where we're not receiving the services that we need to receive in this city, we're not receiving the respect that we need to receive in this city as Muslims, and really, we're really tired of it and fed up with it. And so, we down here, we want to, we want to begin to address that. We're going to be down here, if we had to be down here every week, addressing what's happening in the Muslim community and the respect that we're receiving even from our own council members, no services that we receive, you know, it's just real crazy, the things that are going on. So, most times when people think Islamophobia, they think of immigrant Muslims, they think they're going to be out the country and all that, but we got African-American black Muslims here in this city that's been receiving disrespect after disrespect after disrespect from administration after administration after administration. And really, we're not going to really tolerate it anymore. Yes, it's just disrespectful, and we're going to be, if we had to be down here every week, we're going to be knocking on your door, we're going to be at your office, you know, we, we, we deserve the respect that we're supposed to get because we're citizens in the city, paying our taxes, working in this city during everything that everybody else do. And I can say you need to check the numbers because there's over 600,000 Muslims in this city, 66 masses in this city, and I've been a Muslim in this city for 42 years. And the whole underlying subtleness of the, of the Islamophobia and the disrespect that we receive and the services that we receive, the minute there's somebody here that you're a Muslim, the door's closed. So, you know, if, if we can't get the, you know, the proper representation down here, the Republicans are right down the street, a block away. They took the White House, they took the Senate, they took the Congress. Next day, they're going to take City Hall if y'all not careful.
Thank you for your testimony.
Imam Sotir Adern.
Hold on a second, okay. Go on.
Imam Mike Abdullah.
Yes. That's, that's again.
Hold on, sir, hold on.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
All right. Are you going to speak? Who's the next Imam to speak? You want to speak, why don't you come up and speak?
You have a city, you have a city here that is...
Do me a favor, just state your name for the record.
Imam, Imam Mike Abdullah.
Thank you.
We have a city here, in this city, right? We have a, of many different cultures of Muslims, but we are the indigenous Muslims. We have been here, we were born here, we raised here, and we are involved in everything that goes on in the city. We are part of the politics in the city, lack it or not. We have a lot of our children sitting in these jailhouses, coming out of the prisons looking for work, looking for different things to go on, and we do everything possible that I can think of to find support so that we can correct issues all out through the city. The city is majority, they wrote in the Daily newspaper that the city was Muslim town. That's how many Muslims they said was here. And when they spoke about the majority of these Muslims, they were so-called Afro-American Muslims, so-called black Muslims that was here. Now, the problem that we have, you have people who are coming down here, and they're trying to represent those people who are the indigenous people, the people who've been here always. They cannot represent me. They don't understand the issues, and they don't have the problems that I have that I grew up with from being here. So, the ones that correct the problem in this city, the one that correct the things that are going around here, it's actually us. And so, we should get the support and the leadership position that we need in order to correct a lot of problems that we have in the city with the children, everyone. We don't want to travel jails with a lot of people coming out here saying Islam, calling theyself Muslims, but they're all over the place. So, what we need, we need the support of city council so that we can take and clear up the matters that are going on out through the city, period, with Muslims and everyone. There's no greater answer than to work with us so we can work with you. Do not be afraid when we come and we ask you for support or hat, or support or help. Don't be afraid. Don't shut the doors to us. Don't run us off. Don't give us our, call you later, the phone calls. Don't do that stuff. Work with us so that we can make things right, uh, correct what's going on today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Before we proceed, I would like to take a moment to recognize our good friend, State Representative Jordan Harris, and I believe I saw my Senator, Senator Sharif Street. Thank you all for coming down. And I'd like to recognize Councilman O'Neil.
Excuse from the remainder of the council session and be reported as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. At least it'll be granted, and the record will reflect your votes. Thank you. Mr. Decker.
George Gould. Commenting on 160687A.
Thank you. My name is George Gould. I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services in Philadelphia. Our office represents low-income families, giving advice, representation, and also working on important policy issues that affect our clients. I am here today in strong support of bill number 160687A. This important bill deals with the disclosure of lead hazards in water in residential properties in Philadelphia. I have worked closely with Councilwoman Bass's staff, particularly Shoshana Breckland and Councilwoman Bass, and also from the city, Robert Murdock, in finalizing the provisions of this bill. This bill follows up on a bill passed by Councilwoman Gimm that dealt with water quality regarding lead in our schools. It also followed up an important bill by Councilwoman Reynolds Round, which dealt with childcare facilities in Philadelphia. They're now required to get, in order to get a license, they must have a lead safe certification. The bill today has some important provisions. First, tenants are required to get from their landlords a pamphlet regarding the best practices to deal with lead water service lines and lead plumbing components. Secondly, a landlord is now required to notify the tenant of a known existence of a lead water service line in their property. Thirdly, a landlord cannot discriminate against families with children because there is a lead service line or there is a lead plumbing component. Moreover, the bill also provides that the lease gives a tenant a 10-day period to get a lead inspection done on the property to see if there are lead water service lines or lead plumbing components, and if they are, they have a right to cancel the lease within two days. Finally, the bill has a provision which specifically says there can be no waiver of any provisions in the bill, in the lease. I think this is a very important bill, and I urge council people to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Clerk, could you please rename of our next speaker?
Jacob Bender.
Good morning. Assalamualaikum, shalalaikum. My name is Jacob Bender, and I am the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Chapter of CARE, the Council on American-Islamic Relations. CARE is America's preeminent Muslim civil rights organization, and I have the honor of being the first non-Muslim and Jewish director of one of its 30 chapters. My presence here today is a refutation of the ahistorical lie that the Muslim community and Islam itself are inherently anti-Semitic, and that Jews and Muslims are now and will ever be enemies. Rather, I'm here today as proof that Jews and Muslims inspired by our respective religious traditions can indeed work together in this country for the greater good and join with other communities in a great coalition against the ignorant, bigoted, and bullying men who now rule our beloved country. City Council Resolution 16119, the resolution submitted by Councilwoman Helen Gimm, is an expression of the Ayjod idea founded in all the world's sacred creeds, that we are truly our brothers and sisters' keepers, united in our common existence as passengers upon this fragile and now endangered planet. And now, we have the new resident of the Oval Office lethally banning tens of thousands of desperate Syrian refugees from these sometimes welcoming shores, condemning them to almost certain death. Should we be surprised at all, then, that those who refuse to accept the science of climate change, or are too concerned with corporate profits to let a small thing like rising sea levels get in their way, are part of the same clique now sequestered as the National Cabinet? Cabinet that sees all Muslims as inherently dangerous traitors and consequently are planning to implement such unconstitutional policies as a national registry, religious profiling, and the possible reintroduction of torture as the official go-to interrogation methodology of the United States of America?
Good, well, thank you for coming down and here speaking today.
One more paragraph, excuse me. The widespread ignorance about Muslims in this country at this moment is truly astonishing with those condemning Islam the loudest hardly knowing the difference between Hamas and Hamas. Councilwoman Gimm's resolution will not rewrite the history of this nation but is the small and absolutely necessary action at the traumatic moment, in this traumatic moment, in the life of the Republic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read our next speaker? Councilwoman, we're gonna take a brief moment to handle some technical issues. We are not at ease, still in session, but we were gonna take a brief moment to handle some technical issues. That was quick technology. Clerk, would you please read our next speaker, please?
President Clark, members of City Council and good people, good people of Philadelphia. My name is Judy Sullivan. I am the Chair of the Board of the Interfaith Center of Greater Philadelphia, as well as the Dean of the Philadelphia Episcopal Cathedral, and a proud Philadelphian. I speak to you today in support of Resolution 161119 offered by Councilmembers Gimm and Jones. The principle of religious liberty was at the heart of William Penn's dream for Philadelphia. He called it a holy experiment, imagining a society where people of different faiths could share the benefits of freedom. That dream became our gloriously diverse city where persons of all faiths and economic backgrounds live and work side by side peacefully and respectfully. We who love Philadelphia will not stand by when it is threatened by ugly, inflammatory, hateful words and actions that tear at the very fiber of our democracy and our vision of a just, inclusive society. The recent escalation of hate crimes, particularly against our sisters and brothers from Muslim and Arabic immigrant communities, is alarming. We at the Interfaith Center of Greater Philadelphia add our voices in condemning these actions. We call upon the citizens of our region to join us in our campaign to dare to understand those whose religious, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may differ from our own. We call upon all Philadelphians to resist fear and the voices that seek to divide us, resist hatred and prejudice, respect the dignity of every human being, that we may realize Penn's dream and the model of religious pluralism that our Constitution protects. Let us be that holy people that Penn intended. We urge your support of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read our next speaker, please?
Commenting on 161119.
Good morning, Council President Clark and City Councilmembers. Assalamualaikum. Peace be on to you. Again, my name is Salima Susquell. I am a second-generation African-American Muslim woman, born to my Muslim parents, Majida Rashid and Imam Assem Abdurashid, and raised in the city of Philadelphia. Philadelphia, the birthplace of this nation, was founded upon the principles of religious tolerance, religious freedom, and religious inclusion. Philadelphia is home to an estimated over 250,000 Muslim citizens. We are educators, we are doctors, we are lawyers, we are elected officials, we are the police officers that help to keep the streets safe each day, we are your neighbors, we are your sisters and your brothers. While this country hasn't often lived up to the ideals of openness and tolerance, those of us who strive for a better society have always sought to create a United States and a city of Philadelphia that welcomes all regardless of their religion or where they come from. Today, I ask the Philadelphia City Council to support Resolution 161119, which seeks to uphold the city of Philadelphia's support for and protection of Muslim communities, condemning violence and hate speech targeted towards Muslims, affirming the religious pluralism of the United States, and urging Philadelphia residents to stand in solidarity with our American Muslim communities and all other communities for peace and for justice. Although I recognize that this road ahead is tough for the American Muslim community, I have vowed to push forward and to fight harder and to work together in solidarity with all groups of all religious and ethnic and unique backgrounds because that is what it will take for us to approach prosperity, dignity, peace, and harmony in this city and in this nation. And so again, I ask that you stand in solidarity with the Muslim-American community of Philadelphia against social injustice, hate speech, hate crimes, and vicious rhetoric that influences and ignites turmoil in our society. I would like to thank Councilwoman Helen Gimm and Councilwoman Curtis Jones, Jr., for co-sponsoring this resolution and for their unwavering support of the Philadelphia Muslim community. And thank you to all of the councilmembers here today that have supported this resolution and who continue to represent and support the Muslims within your respective districts.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Robert Taylor, President of TWU, Local 700, and WPEB, 88.1 FM, co-host on the Jasper Jones Show. I'm commenting on Resolution 161119. Quote, "upholding the city of Philadelphia's support for and protection of Muslim communities, condemning violence and hate speech targeted toward Muslims and all other communities for peace and justice," end quote. Let us not forget, a little over a year ago, 14 people were murdered, 29 injured by a Jihaiya couple in the San Bernardino attack. It is important to remember that this act stems from a radical interpretation of certain Muslim laws and tradition, which clearly resulted in the death of American citizens on multiple occasions. According to former Muslim Ayann Hersi Ali, quote, "Islam is not a religion of peace. It is a political theory of conquest that seeks domination by any means it can," end quote. Moreover, many average Muslims support suicide bombing, according to Pew Research. Quote, "In the United States, it's 26% for 18- to 29-year-olds, 13% overall, with an estimated 200,000 such people in Philadelphia. Thus, this is a volatile concern." Then we have sanctuary city policies that bring in illegal immigrants, Muslim and others, not by law but through executive orders, by the way of the mayor's office. This is lawless and dangerous. Quote, "One of the reasons that we're seeing so many attacks here in the United States is that we've been importing wholesale tens of thousands of people who hate us." Tucker Carlson. When people come to the United States, they must acknowledge that we work under a constitutional system of law and not under Sharia law or any other law. If they fail or refuse to acknowledge this, then they are invaders and must be rooted out. Quote, "Sneaking into a country does not make you an immigrant any more than breaking into a house makes you a part of the family. For those who will respect the laws and come in in a lawful manner, that's to say with proper vetting, I welcome them and they should have our support. I am thankful for the new President Trump administration that has promised to do such vetting. This nation is founded as one nation under God with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Shh, shh, shh.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Everybody should have a right to say what they have to say. Next.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 161114 and 160007.
This is yet another official decree from the people and must be acted upon immediately. As Philadelphians, we pay some of the highest taxes. What does this buy us? Better, more law-binding government employees ready to serve and protect, better agents and agencies bound by oath to protect and defend the Constitution laws against all enemies, foreign and domestic. This council was decreed multiple times to act on possible illegal and unconstitutional activities. These allegations seem to violate constitutions and laws requiring prosecution penalties of all involved as counsel and accessory after the fact. I offer these laws for example, 42 U.S.C., 1982, 83, 85, 86, 18 U.S.C., 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11. Why has this well-paid government refused to allow the people to decide? Why has this government failed to prove in a public hearing that never violated any constitutions or laws as required by the Rite of Man Damas Quo warrant. Violations of oath of office undermine people's faith in government and require prosecution. This is a color of law government and as such has violated franchise or charter to government. I call upon the Commonwealth and federal governments to act and perform their respective constitutional obligations to defund, investigate, and prosecute to the fullest extent of the law any and all violations of constitutions and laws by said agents and agencies in Philadelphia, to make immediate remedy, restore and make whole any and all damage by these constitutional law violations, to restore the rule of law where deeds are transferred by consent of the owner with full due process and trial by jury is never denied, where government pays for what it takes because stealing is not allowed. If average people must follow the law, why can government claim immunity? If a congressman receives a trial by jury, then why am I denied? Accountability requires auditable consent of the government. The Declaration of Independence reminds us, and I quote, "After depriving us in many cases the benefit of trial by jury, it is our right and our duty to throw off such a government." This flawlessness cannot be allowed. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of 161119?
A resolution upholding the city of Philadelphia's support for and protection of Muslim communities, condemning violence and hate speech targeted toward Muslims, affirming the religious pluralism of the United States, and urging Philadelphia residents to stand in solidarity with our American Muslim communities and all other communities for peace and justice.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna do, who's gonna make the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the bills, uh, the resolutions adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution 161119 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160687A.
An ordinance amending Title VI of the Philadelphia Code and titled Health to require disclosure of lead hazards, including lead service lines, and making technical changes.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill is voting aye. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Guernona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 161001.
An ordinance constituting the 15th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the city of Philadelphia.
This bill has been heard on two separate occasions. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill is voting aye. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Guernona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 161016.
An ordinance legalizing existing building and bank encroachments at 110, 112, and 114 Olive Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill is voting aye. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Guernona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of the 25th Annual African-American Children's Book Fair, and that February 4th is the kickoff of the National Literacy Initiative, Preserve a Legacy by a Book, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair Gimm recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing February 2017 as Career and Technical Education Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring and recognizing Dr. Arthur C. Evans for his accomplishments and numerous contributions to the City of Philadelphia on the occasion of his retirement from the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, and congratulating him on his appointment as CEO of the American Psychological Association, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine the benefits of having a more robust homeless prevention program in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Sandy Scheller and the Scheller Family Foundation for their tireless work throughout the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Lynn Honnackam and the Honnackman Foundation on their work to improve the lives of citizens across the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold hearings to examine the potential impact of the presidential election and the impending state budget process of the City of Philadelphia's financial condition, introduced by Councilman Heenan on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Forty thousand.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Hoshimu Jaramogi, Yuki Washington, Rick Williams, Douches Rogers, and Lady B., who are leaders in the area of radio, print, and television journalism in Philadelphia as part of the commemoration of Black History Month, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yes, our, uh, Hoshimu and Douches appreciate this. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring women leaders in Philadelphia's media industry, Mary Mason, Patty Jackson, Thera Milling, and Marty Moss Combe, in observance of Women's History Month, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Jones.
I know it's first day back. Um, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committees on Legislative Oversight and Public Safety to hold hearings examining solutions to trees and other obstructions in the city's alleyways, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom. Who did you say? I'm sorry. Chair, I'm sorry. First day back.
I don't have that type of money, but thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committees on Legislative Oversight and Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings examining the incidence of raccoon infestation in the City of Philadelphia and administrative solutions for the public health concerns posed thereby, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Battalion Chief Joakim Enrique Colon Jr. on the occasion of his retirement following 34 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating the outstanding career of Belinda Ann Mayo for her devotion and dedication to providing access to low-income housing throughout the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it.
And a resolution authorizing the Council, the Council of the City of Philadelphia to investigate the recent sale of tax delinquent properties approved for acquisition by the Philadelphia Land Bank for workforce housing, side yards, and community gardens, to assess land bank strategies to better support balanced and equitable neighborhood growth, and to explore moratorium on all lien and sheriff sales of tax delinquent properties, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf and pro-sponsored, Councilwoman Blackwell, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in prop, I'm sorry. Uh, before we call for the vote, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to speak to this issue. Uh, over the past year, and actually probably even longer than that, but over the past year, my colleagues in this chamber, members of the administration, have heard me speak extensively about the need for the City of Philadelphia to improve its efforts on tax collections. Today, Council President, you introduced a resolution that acknowledges the issue that has long troubled our city, delinquencies, and I agree we must repair the system. I've been strongly advocating that the City of Philadelphia pursue a tax lien securitization method that has a proven track record of success, most notably in New York City, where they have improved their collection rate from 85% to 98%. Today in Philadelphia, we're at 92%. We can do better. As a major city, we lag behind other comparable cities when it comes to collecting monies. In fact, of the top 20, we're the lowest in collection. These are monies that are due for the school district. 55% of all the monies go to the schools. We need these dollars to support our children and their future. We must do better. In fact, in July, we had a press conference, we released a study that documented we have 492 million of delinquent taxes, we have possibility of collecting 9220 million within six months, and we can improve our ongoing collections by 25 to 40 million. Powerful. We have a $6-point-billion-dollar pension deficit. We need these dollars. We have a fund balance that's very low. We need these monies. And more importantly, the school system needs the monies. And to your point, Council President, which you've raised, which is very valid, the land bank has the opportunity to revitalize neighborhoods, improve public safety, and more, and we could use these dollars to support it. That's the only way it will be truly successful with the planning, rehabilitation, and demolition projects. A securitization would be quite beneficial to Philadelphia and its land bank interests. In fact, it accommodates a number of goals and the concerns in the resolution, and it gives the city flexibility and control. We are in control. A securitization is beneficial not only to collect delinquent tax dollars, but also for property rehabilitation and demolition efforts conforming to the city's redevelopment initiatives. Land bank activities would not, would be promoted by a securitization in a number of ways. During the pre-sale process, property due diligence would be undertaken within city-created trust handling the securitization. This due diligence information would be available to the city's planning and redevelopment staff, as well as the city's land bank officials. The city could use this information to determine which liens could be conveyed to the trust for collection and which underlying properties to transfer to the land bank for redevelopment purposes. A land bank is a partner in the process. A land bank can only be effective if it has the resources. A securitization can provide the needed monies to accomplish both planning, rehabilitation, and demolition. A securitization is the solution to your resolution, Mr. President. It accomplishes a number of goals that this body is fighting tirelessly to achieve. If we choose this path, I am confident we will accomplish these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna do something that I've never done before. Uh, Councilman Heenan, can you take this for a second?
Thank you, Council President. And now I'd like to recognize Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Um, this is a very important issue to me, which is why I'm here, which I rarely do. I don't think I've ever done. And I want to make sure that it's an understanding of the concerns that have been raised by not only myself, but a number of members, a number of advocates, that the reality is, is that there was a significant effort put in creating the land bank, Mr. Leader. Um, a lot of people did a lot of good work. One of the members just left, Representative Jordan Harris, was a state rep. Our good friend, Councilman Johnson, was at that point a state rep when this whole conversation started. And the simple reality is, is that we were optimistic about the likelihood that we finally had a tool that would be put, we would be put in a position where we had a balanced, uh, an opportunity to have a balance and an economically diverse strategy for rebuilding our neighborhoods, particularly those neighborhoods of quote-unquote "choice," where there were increasing values. And what we're simply saying is that we're asking for people to take a step back, because the simple reality is, is that the same people that we would be asking to oversee the securitization program, and I actually met with Councilman Dom early on, on a number of occasions, and met with the people from New York, where we had that conversation. And it might be something that would ultimately make some sense once we got the data. But the simple reality is, is that if people in the government don't adhere to the commitments that were made, the same people, who frankly speaking, committed to doing a land bank strategy, we actually just introduced, on behalf of the administration, Fair Housing Act and some of the other things related to that, um, if they decide not to adhere or simply ignore the request of the land bank and the council members, then it doesn't matter, because those same people will ignore and not adhere to the recommendations that were made by those same council members. So my issue is not so much around, um, the strategies, but it is around the notion that people within the government can ultimately make the final decision on how we proceed as it relates to developing our communities in a fair and equitable way. So my concern is, one, obviously, we have to make sure that the data is correct, but number two, we have to have a commitment to participate and participate in earnest, not simply say at a table that we're okay, but at the end of the day, because we have the ability to proceed without any sign-off or without any check and balance from the City Council of Philadelphia, we're just gonna settle. So that's my most significant issue, and I must tell you that it will, we're looking at going beyond simply having a public hearing on this process and this conversation. You know, I was on the radio a couple of days, and people were amazed that there were no, there was no check and balance, Mr. Leader, as it relates to council's ability to have influence as it relates to the sheriff sales of properties. That's a problem. And we're looking at, hopefully, an understanding between us and the Revenue Department as to how we proceed and continue the conversation around a memorandum of understanding, but not simply have, um, and I don't know who's in charge at that aspect of the government, simply have people ignore the wish and the request of not only the council members, but the land bank board and all of the stakeholders that fought to put this in place. So that is my issue, and I'm hoping that throughout the public hearing process and probably some additional measures that we will look at, that we can get on the same page, as I said earlier, to a reporter, and we can move towards truly being the neighborhood mayor, as Mayor Kenny has referenced, and I believe in him and believe in his commitment to doing that, and the neighborhood council, but more importantly, the neighborhood bureaucracy, because, and we sometimes call them the B-team, because they be here when we get elected, and they be here when we get unelected, when we retire. So we need to have, within this structure of government, a commitment, um, that's systemic or systematic as it relates to our needs to deal with the citizens of the City of Philadelphia, and subsequently, to help these people, this community. So I just wanted to say that, um, that that's the objective, and hopefully, Mr. Leader, we can get back on the same page, and we can move forward on what we believe that ultimately will be something that's good for all the citizens of the City of Philadelphia. So with that, I will give you your chair back, sir.
I drank all your water, Council President, all right, but, but, but thank you for your insights and explanation. I think it really does help a lot. Chair, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. I want to thank Council President for his Booker move, Cory Booker move over here. Um, and just add that I think we're all interested in the collection strategies, and I also respect Councilman Dom and want to work with him on a strategy for how do we increase, um, our collections. Uh, but economic community development policy is set by the mayor and council, and so anytime bureaucracy stands in the way of what is an agreement that way, is not good. The strategic plan, and, you know, we worked very hard to create a very transparent process, and what we call bucket of opportunities, and I look forward, and I believe that ultimately the mayor will agree with the buckets of opportunities, and we will create a filter that will allow everyone to meet basic standards, and then we can move forward. Um, the article today highlighted one thing, and I think it's important for folks, you know, we gotta think about this in a bolder way. At the current pace of acquisitions and this new tool, it'll take us 50 to 70 years to just address the current blank and vacancy that is in the, in the city. Um, and we don't have that time. Our neighborhoods are changing, the city is growing, and we need to protect, um, folks in these neighborhoods and create those opportunities in an equitable way. Uh, so there's a sense of urgency, and I really do appreciate always your leadership, your strong leadership on this issue. And with that, I move for its adoption.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the efforts of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Coalition and declaring February 2017 as a month of peace in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, last week, I was honored to stand with Bilal Kwayum, who is the chair of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Coalition, and representatives of over 55 organizations declaring February as a month of peace. Uh, the mission of the Anti-Violence Coalition is to effectively facilitate collaboration among diverse grassroots organizations to empower the community, to increase the peace in our neighborhoods through activism, education, prevention/intervention programs, and effective policy advocacy. Um, the Anti-Violence Coalition has developed a 10-point program. Some of the points of those, of that program includes establish street intervention teams to go into neighborhoods where there has been high numbers of shootings. The team will go door-to-door with information to provide employment opportunities, housing, social service assistance, et cetera. Create activities year-round for youth in neighborhoods at churches, mosques, recreation centers, and schools, and establish mentoring programs in each of these settings. Work to develop a crisis response center that will train intervention specialists to work with troubled individuals. Establish resources in neighborhoods that help residents build sustained leadership, to build partnership for social and government agencies to develop systematic changes to empower the residents. Develop an interfaith-based group to provide spiritual direction to the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Coalition, and promote the unifying message of "Live and Let Live." I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Joan C. Mazadi for her exceptional leadership and dedication over the last 16 years as the Executive Director of Philadelphia Futures, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom, my good friend.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing January 27, 2017 as Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring January 30, 2017, Fred Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties and the Constitution in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Green, Squilla, O., and Councilwoman Parker.
Uh, before we call for the motion, Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Well, two things I would be honored to call for, for the motion, but when it comes to interim, as mentioned in the resolution very well and many times, I know firsthand of the difficulty and pain that can cause a family. As my father- I know firsthand of the difficulty and pain that that can cause a family, as my father, Alfred William Taubenberger, Sr., was interned during World War II from nineteen forty-two, forty-three. I will be obviously voting aye for this resolution. It's something that should be brought to the public, and I do so with the thousands of Americans of Italian, German, and Japanese descent that were unfairly, unjustly interned during World War II, denying what the Declaration of Independence said, their pursuit of happiness, taking away from their families, from their neighborhoods, and from the rest of American society. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. We had a motion. It's been moved and probably second. All those-- Councilman, did you want to speak? I knew we were going to call on the motion, but--
The comments of Councilmember Taubenberger. Earlier today, I had the fortune to have visiting with us today retired Judge Shusaka Tataro. He unfortunately had to leave before we could acknowledge him here in this body. And the fact that he is a retired judge from Japan who's a visiting researcher at the University of Pennsylvania, and the symbolism of him being here when we're doing this motion, I think is very symbolic. And I just wanted to offer that, and I'm glad he was able to observe our legislative body, and especially on a day we're honoring this gentleman who basically has been a civil rights leader in our country.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Councilman. There has been a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings concerning the Board of Health's regulations relating to the tobacco retailing license and the impact those regulations could have on local businesses. Introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing council's committee on public health and human services to hold hearings on the impact of the repeal of the Affordable Care Act on the residents of the city of Philadelphia and particularly on low-income and elderly populations, and further investigating the city of Philadelphia's preparedness to address the increase of those who would be without adequate healthcare insurance. Introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Eighth District Sanitation Initiative on its efforts to find a solution to the chronic and long-term problem of trash dumping in Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia's Community Behavioral Health Organization on the occasion of its twentieth anniversary. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the two thousand sixteen winners of PHL Live Center Stage. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Gimm for her timely resolution. It's timely because when concerns of citizens arise, it's important to address their needs. And let me say that that bill, co-sponsored by Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr., is not unique to this body. And I want to make sure when people see us in action that they understand that this body has been on the forefront of standing up for human rights, civil rights in this city, and particularly when it comes to Muslims and Arabs, you know, discrimination towards Muslims and Arabs. This body has introduced resolution after resolution, ordinances and other things, taken initiatives to ensure our citizens that Philadelphia government is protecting them and ensuring there's equity in the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority, and this chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I introduced a resolution recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and it's no more than a continuation of our examination of this issue starting in two thousand fifteen and subsequently circled on a task force with Judge Lori Dumas around this issue. What we need to know is that it is a global problem with local impact. Human trafficking involves school-aged children, most often vulnerable due to challenging family situations. And human trafficking takes on a number of variety of forms, including forced labor, domestic servitude, and the obvious, commercial sexual exploitation. Right here in Philadelphia, a kingpin of human trafficking, known as Bruce Middleinitial Cash Steele, forty-four, was operating his own human trafficking ring right here in the Philadelphia Fifth County area. And who were the victims? Women addicted to drugs, women with psychological trauma, women who were homeless. October two thousand sixteen, the FBI Philadelphia Division arrested fifteen pimps and associates as part of what is known as the Operation Cross Country X, an international effort focused on underage human trafficking, which obviously includes children. Human trafficking is not a someplace-else issue. You can go up and down Ninety-five corridor from New York to parts of Kensington in Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez's district, where we have a safe house, and find human trafficking. So this morning, I want to particularly commend Police Commissioner Richard Ross, who served on that task force led by Judge Lori Dumas, as his office has joined with the FBI and the U.S. Attorney's Office, along with the Philadelphia Salvation Army, to pull together a, finally, a human trafficking task force that will tackle this ugly issue, that will help us coordinate and better recognize the signs of human trafficking, and ultimately to dismantle trafficking networks. Again, kudos to Commissioner Ross and Judge Lori Dumas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'd like to invite my colleagues to come out and join me at four P.M. in the caucus room for the worst surprise reception in the history of surprises. Everybody in here knows, but I'm not supposed to know that. I'm being sworn in, and thanks to your appointment to the Committee on Justice Reform, Governor Wolf has also appointed me to the Human Relations Commission, the Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee, and a reappointment to PCCD. And we will be sworn in in the caucus room by Judge Dumas. The surprise is supposed to be that Blondo Reynolds Brown is the emcee and that you have agreed to speak. All these surprises. But I guess the good news is that my staff doesn't let anything sneak up on me. I made sure I wore a power tie today, so I appreciate it. Would like my colleagues to come out. And it just goes to show, like in the army, never volunteer for a committee because what happens is if you do it fairly well, you'll wind up on different committees. But I appreciate your trust in me and the work that's following.
Thank you, Councilman. You did a great job. Thank you so much. Look forward to your continuing good work. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Philadelphia Resident Survey is my subject. The city of Philadelphia is administering a resident survey to gain valuable input from residents on city services such as policing, public safety, trash collection, local parks, and other community services to help improve our city. The results of these surveys will help guide the administration's response to public needs. The surveys in both English and Spanish, there's one, was one on your desk today. They can be, also can be completed online at www.phlsurvey.com or by phone by calling The survey can be, also be completed in person, and hard copies of these surveys were passed out to a few copies to our council offices on Monday. So please encourage your students to fill them out. And, why, did I say students? Sorry. My past sneaks up on me every now and then. And if you need more, you can get them from Mayor's Office. Debbie's in charge of this. And they're also asking that we collect them or have them returned to our offices because the Mayor's Office wants to get them back from us. And this survey form will be open until February fifteenth. So let's try to let, talk to our constituents and groups so that the mayor can find out, and then we also know what, he'll know when he comes up here for budget, what people are saying. But thank you very much. So you see the forms on your desk in English and Spanish, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to also say it feels good to be back in city council doing the work of the people. As a young man, a lawyer once told me that ignorance of the law is no excuse. And so today, I introduce a bill to examine and mandate ethics training for city council members. Currently, ethics trainings are informally conducted, but I think it's important moving forward as a city and a body that we formalize the system and have it codified that city council members have mandatory ethics training every council term. As elected officials and city employees who get to introduce legislation and change the rules in the city, we want to be proactive in making sure we are doing everything in our power to stay knowledgeable of the code, answer the positive example of our behavior. The ethics rules and guidelines are being examined and changed every year, and city councils notified of changes, sometimes via email, piecemeal, which can be overlooked or forgotten in a larger scheme of emails and legislation that we look at. We want to be sure we are promoting logical, good behavior for ourselves and future city councils. And this also will give us an opportunity, as members of this body, to continue doing the good work of the people, setting a positive example for our staff members, but most importantly, staying on point. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That appears to conclude the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. And with that, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February second, at ten A.M. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, February second, two thousand seventeen, ten A.M. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all very much.